Okay, welcome to the 2020 Santa Monica Democratic Club City Council Forum Debate. Engagement of Ideas, whatever you want to call it, here we are. And we're really excited to have such a great set of candidates this year who the Board got to interview and meet. Before we start, I do want to share that two of our candidates are not with us at the moment. One candidate, Mario Fonda Benardi, is currently in the middle of the Planning Commission meeting. So he let me know just now that it's still going on. And he's going to try to join us toward the end. And we'll give him just a couple of minutes, assuming he makes it by the end, to give a statement or two. And also candidate Christine Para, who we interviewed and considered. Unfortunately, duty called and she's been, you know, she is an emergency manager at Culver City. But with, that's her day job. And so she's been called away to work on the emergency response to the Bobcat Fire. So she actually left her day job in Culver City and drove all the way out to work on that. And so she sends her regards, she really wanted to be here, would have been great. But unfortunately, she's not able to make it. I also invited both Christine and Mario to share with us a recorded video that I would have played at the end. But neither of them were able to make that accommodation. So with that said, we're going to continue with six candidates. We have five candidates, we have five candidates here, seven, eight total. Did I do the math wrong? No, yeah, we have six candidates here, eight total, who are running for the full four-year term. And there were four positions available. We also have an additional candidate who will be joining this forum, Kristin McCowen. Kristin's running unopposed this year, which means that tonight she will need more votes to get our endorsement than she will actually need to win election in November 3rd. So good luck to Kristin on that. So now we are going to begin the forum and want to welcome our candidates. City Councilmember Gleam Davis, City Councilmember Kristin McCowen, City Councilmember and Mayor Pro Tempore Terry O'Day, City Councilmember Anna Maria Hara. We have Commissioner Phil Brock, Commissioner Mario Fonda Benardi, who's not here right now, or School Board Member Oscar De La Torre. And that's all of them. And Christine, who's not here, is an emergency manager in Culver City. So I've actually, in order to keep everything fair, I've got all the names in a randomizer. So that's the way that we're going to do the order for these questions. And that means that Gleam, the first question's going to go to you. And it is, and I'm going to ask a question. So we have about six to eight questions that are going to be posed to all the candidates. And then within those, after we hear from all the candidates on that topic, then we're going to hear from them on some quick follow-up questions. Some of them are yes or no. Some of them will take 30 seconds to answer. And the candidates can choose from those follow-ups whether they want to engage or not. So here we go. We'll begin with Gleam getting the first question. As we know, Santa Monica faces a budget deficit of over $200 million due to COVID-19 shutdowns. In all of your questionnaires, the candidates have proposed a wide variety of solutions. Why do you think that your proposals for economic recovery from this pandemic are the best solutions for the city?
Thanks, and thank you, everyone, for coming this evening and spending your Wednesday night engaged in our community. I think the reason that my proposals are among the best, and they're actually shared by the other incumbents, is that we believe that economic recovery is the surest way to make, to restore the things that were lost when we had to make such draconian budget cuts earlier this year. And it broke all of our hearts to do so. But what we do know is that Santa Monica remains a special place. We are unique and that we offer things that no other community can. So if we can convince local businesses, tourists, visitors, regional visitors, that Santa Monica is safe, that Santa Mon, they can come to Santa Monica and not worry about getting ill, that they can come and enjoy the many amenities that we have to offer, for example, the ocean on 110-degree days. That way, we'll be able to begin to make that economic uptick. We'll be able to get more revenues back into the city coffers. And ultimately, we'll be able to restore a lot of the programs, such as our libraries, our regular routine strapping that we lost when we made the budget cuts.
Thank you, Gleam. And now let's hear from Kristin McCowen.
Hi, hi all. It's nice to be here with you tonight. So I have to agree. I mean, I think that economic recovery is our best bet to getting through this budget deficit. And I'd also said that we need to look at, and this came up last night in the council meeting, we need to look at the areas that receive the fewest cuts, particularly our police budget, and see if there is still room to possibly make some cuts or at least reallocate some of that money to other areas. But my focus on economic recovery specifically is, and we have a meeting about this tomorrow, is we're trying to find new innovative ways to bring some of the private industry, particularly that which has benefited during COVID, in to help subsidize some of the social programs, particularly for poor and vulnerable. I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Now let's go to Phil Brock.
Hi, good evening, everyone. You know, we keep talking about rebuilding. And I prefer to talk about a rebirth. Because I'm not sure we were doing all that well before COVID-19 hit. So right now, I believe we're at the 2013 budget in terms of our expenses. And we've cut some of the fat from our budget. And I think we can rebirth our city, look at our core industries, try and make those work better, and also look at what the residents really need and want in terms of our budget. So I don't want us to rebuild the same way we were. I want us to become a better, more nimble city that's imbued with common sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. And now let's go to Terry O'Day.
Sure, thanks, John. I'm Terry O'Day. And I, you know, as we tackle this question, I think we got to size up the problem. Clearly, we have cut more than $200 million out of this year's budget. We have laid off more than 400 of our employees. And in making those decisions, we cut principally the discretionary areas that for many of us represent the values of this progressive community. It's about sustainability. It's about community well-being. And it is about the kinds of things that draw us together and draw us to this club as Democrats. And it's important that we get back to the work of figuring out how this economy is going to work again. We have been more exposed than most communities to this, and our progressive values have been most threatened by it. And so rebuilding this economy by focusing on domestic tourism instead of tourism and creating good quality of life is critical.
Thank you. And let's go to Oscar De La Torre.
Thank you all very much for giving me this opportunity. You know, even before COVID, as Phil Brock said, there were problems. We had people making very high salaries and the council couldn't say no, couldn't hold the line on that. I agree, we have to work in partnership, you know, with our local businesses, especially small businesses. But let's not use, let's not use this crisis as an opportunity to push for initiatives that exacerbate gentrification and displace small businesses and also renters. Let's also look at the facts. You know, we, the city council, part of their neglect led to a settlement of more than $42 million emanating from child abuse that happened over decades at the Police Activities League in Santa Monica. This is a city-run program. And you have to just ask yourself, how can that happen? It's lack of accountability, lack of transparency. And, you know, that's something that's really hurtful to our community. But the cost of the tax is enormous.
Thank you. And now let's go to Ted Winter.
So to restore some of the budget cuts that we painfully had to implement since all those programs we all cherished and valued. It's a three-fold process, at least in the short term. As some others mentioned, we have to promulgate a strong economic recovery. 65% of our revenues to provide services to our residents come from businesses. And so we have to support the small businesses that are a lifeblood of our local economy. We also need everybody to vote for a ballot measure this fall, which will increase the documentary transfer tax on property sales of $5 million and up. I don't think anybody in this meeting right now has a property worth $5 million. So let's get some revenue out of those people. It's a progressive tax. And the third is, as Mary's mentioning, everybody should be voting for Prop 15. There's a reason why cities like Santa Monica and New Orleans, that are very much dependent on tourism or our sales tax and all sorts of things that fluctuate with the business cycle, had to cut their budgets by 25%. But a town like Boston, which has much higher property tax revenue, cut the budget by only 10%.
Thank you. And finally, Anna Hara.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I think that last year in December, I was a leader to propose an economic development plan. I think that in that plan, we laid out many things that we need to bring forward. And we were already thinking of how it is that we could start some of the recovery that we were already feeling in our city. So I think that I, we need to continue to look at ways of collaborating with our businesses as we have been doing lately and trying to figure out how to maintain them. We have to look at collaborating with our labor unions, trying to see how we can educate and prepare some of our youth. So that way, when we develop some jobs, they are ready to be able to step in. We need to look at local hiring.
Thank you. And now for 30-second response, if anyone wants to jump in. If further budget cuts are needed, which departments or programs will you prioritize for funding to keep?
Is it a free-for-all?
Explain the rules a little bit, John. Sure. So the way that these follow-ups are going to work is if you want to raise your hand or simply jump in, I'll moderate who goes first. Gleam, if you want to go first, since you spoke up first, and then we'll take it from there.
Sure. So as I expressed at our council meeting last night, where we contemplated making cuts to our police budget and redirecting some of those monies to others, I think the places where we need to invest are the areas where we can continue to have a safe, well community. For example, we need to make sure that our youth programs are well-funded, that our libraries are well-funded. But we also need to provide core constituent services. We need to keep our streets clean. We need to make sure that Santa Monica remains a safe place. So if you were asking me where would I put the money, I would put it back in those core services.
Oscar, go ahead.
Yeah. Well, you know, I think first and foremost, there's a real opportunity to reimagine what public safety looks like. So I don't think that we should defund the police. But we need to reimagine what public safety looks, looks like for the future and to deal with the current situation that we're dealing with now. We need more police officers, better trained, working with case managers, working with the mental health issue that we're dealing with in our parks and in our streets to bring public safety, restore public safety in our city.
Okay. And I saw Phil next.
So, you know, we're talking about, I think the question was about rebuilding the budget and where we need to go next. And I talked about a rebirth. But, you know, we have residents who are upset about street cleaning. We have crossing guards who were, it was a matter of whether they're going to be laid off or not. We had all these different things that are core services where we actually reach residents. Those should always be the last things to be cut. Our city attorney's office, we're somewhere around two dozen assistant city attorneys. Dana has nine. What are we doing?
Thank you, Phil. And I saw Ted next.
Yeah, I think that we have to acknowledge that COVID in our community has had a dire impact on many, particularly people, working-class citizens. And I think that the place I would be loath to engage in any further cuts of the programs that help particularly, you know, when both parents work from, and they have to deal with their kids. So I want to make sure we still have those childcare programs within public safety guidelines. And we have programs for at-risk youth. And we have the programs and services that allow people to thrive in these difficult situations where so many people are struggling.
Terry, do you have, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I did, thanks. I think that as we look to restoring, we need to make sure that we're restoring our economy, restoring our values, where we invest. We should be creating a clean, safe, healthy, and equitable community. So those kinds of things also redown to the benefit of our economy and get us further along in making progress in this way. And that means too, putting good public space to work for people and reclaiming it from car that we can turn on the economy and also give us neighborhood services that we care about.
Thank you. I see Anna, and then we'll go to you, Phil. Go ahead, Anna.
So I think that this is all about equity. I think I've been talking about equity ever since I was appointed to City Council. We need to start looking at small businesses and how we can merge some of our most skilled residents, because we have many of them, that want to be self-sufficient. So how can we prepare them to come up with, pair them with small businesses so that way they can open up their own businesses later on and help them to be self-sufficient?
Thank you. And Phil, did you have another comment?
Yeah, I have a quick question. You know, we're talking about rebuilding. Well, rebuilding means a city annex building that costs over $100 million with interest. Rebuilding means a bathroom at Clover Park that costs $2.54 million. We have wasted money in the city. Has a rebirth, now it's time to stop wasting money, to use common sense in working for the good of our residents. And let's start in a simple way. Let's see what the residents really need. And let's start cutting more at the top of City Hall.
Thank you.
I'd like to address Phil's assertion about the city services building. That was actually good fiscal policy for the residents of Santa Monica. We are spending close to $10 million a year on renting office space for our staff. You take that $10 million in lease payments, you convert that into a bond payment of construction. After 30 years, you own an asset, just like it's always better to own a home than to rent. If you're able to do so, we're able to take that money we're paying towards rent and are now paying it towards an asset that allows our citizens to get their city services in one place instead of all over town. And it's not $141 million, Phil said repeatedly.
I, my understanding is with interest, it's over $141 million. And the question is, we could have done a lead gold building, a 50,000-square-foot building with interest rates. That's one of the most expensive buildings to be built in the United States in the last five years. When the African-American Museum at the Smithsonian was able to be built for 1,500 a square foot by the federal government, and our building costs more than that, we didn't really need to make sure that the toilets composted for city staff. We needed to make sure that we had a building that was functional for our residents and for the staff so they could work there. I think we overspent. I absolutely agree with you in that, that we should not be leasing space. I agree with that. The cost was prohibitive.
I'd like to respond.
Sorry, go over.
Go ahead. The cost, the cost of the building was $78 million. And Phil keeps talking about it being $141, $41 million. If you buy a home for $500,000, you don't tell everybody, I paid $850,000 because that's what's going to cost of a loan. You're paying that loan off with dollars that are cheaper 30 years hence. So it's good fiscal policy. And the reason why it's more expensive than a leased apartment building is because it's a living green building. There will be no utility cost to the taxpayers over the life of that building and it creates additional savings.
Thank you. And Phil, I'm going to, we're going to move on, I think, if that's okay. Well, plenty of opportunities, I'm sure. Everybody, yes or no question? If you have a follow-up point, you can make it. Do you support the transfer tax, Measure SM? You can raise your hand if you do. Okay. And Phil, I see you did not raise your hand. You want to make a comment about that at all?
The city transfer tax? I'm reluctant, but I'll support it. I'm concerned about us raising more revenue than we should be spending. And look, we've gone through this before, you know, and our residents are taxed and taxed. Now look, I don't have anything even close to $5 million in my, anywhere. So it doesn't affect me. But I am concerned about all residents of the city, whether they're staying or moving. So I'll vote for it, but I'm concerned about us continuing to tax.
Thank you. And does anyone want to respond to that point? Oscar, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to support what Phil said. I think, you know, the current city council hasn't been capable of holding the line, you know, on, on the excessive salaries at the top. A lot of the frontline workers were, were cut. A lot of, a lot of people lost their jobs. And, and I've talked to many workers, city workers who are struggling right now because of those cuts and the reductions and so forth. So we need to do both things. We need to bring in some revenue because we're in a crisis situation. But we also have to hold the line, you know, and, and hold ourselves accountable within the budget so that we're not, you know, spending, you know, and having staffing pattern that's excessive.
Thank you. And Gleam, it looks like you got your hand up there.
Yeah, so I want to defend our city staff. I want to say, first of all, when the pandemic hit, our very top-level employees took 20% pay cuts immediately to show that they were in solidarity with the tough decisions we had to make. We also negotiated with most of our bargaining units so that they would take some concessions to preserve as many jobs as possible. But civil, our people are not overpaid. In the 11 years I've been on the council, the average raise has been about 1% to 1.5% per year. So this notion that our employees are grossly overpaid is wrong. And I think it's terrible to make people who are earning good living supporting their families scapegoats in this discussion.
Okay, thank you. Ted, go ahead.
Yeah, so I serve on our audit subcommittee along with Sue Himlerich and Terry O'Day's, the rookie took over for Greg Marina. And we did a compensation analysis a number of years ago against comparative cities. And it turns out that most of our pay scales for our employees are pretty much in line with other cities. The exception we did find was in the upper management executive level. And so the reaction was that, and so we gave no pay raises to those executives for several years. And then as Gleam pointed out, not only did we have pay cuts for them, starting at 20%, going down to 5% for those who were paid a little bit, you know, over $100,000 per year.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next topic. We've got a question on policing and social justice in that regard. As our nation wrestles with how to respond to the systemic racism inherent in policing, which has resulted in countless murders of innocent black lives, how do you define the phrase "public safety"? And how would you increase public safety in Santa Monica? And I'm going to go to Oscar first.
Thank you for that question. That's an excellent question. You know, growing up in the Pico neighborhood, I've experienced police abuse. And things have changed in this city. We have a better police department. I have my criticisms, you know, but I can also say that we've hired a better-prepared police department. We have people that, you know, are more educated. So I think that made a big difference in requiring bachelor's degrees, a lot of professional development. So I've seen the change. And I have to acknowledge that, that it's a better police department. But in terms of public safety, I mean, public safety is not the sole role of police. You know, we need to make sure that we look at prevention, intervention, and enforcement working simultaneously. So good schools, after-school programs, you know, and also looking at how we're dealing with the mental health crisis that we're, that we're faced with right now in our city. Police can't, are not trained to do that. That's not, that's not what they're trained to do. We need social workers, case managers. You know, we have an RFP process, a lot of grantees, get a lot of money from the city of Santa Monica.
Thank you. And let's go to Kristin.
And John, do you mind just repeating the question one more time? Sorry, I just want to...
No problem. The question is, how do you define the phrase "public safety"? And how would you increase public safety in Santa Monica?
So public safety, to me, means that everyone should feel like they're actually safe and welcome in this community. I think that's everything from being able to walk down the street and not feel harassed, you know, to knowing that if you call for help, then help will come and won't accidentally assume you might be the perpetrator of the crime. I think the thing that I want to see in Santa Monica is that we have a larger discussion about what public safety means for every Santa Monicaan and what we're really looking for. Because I think one of the, like, gaps in our community policing efforts is that different communities view police differently and have different needs. Santa Monica is a relatively safe place. I don't think our safety is necessarily the fear. I think the fear is, are we all as safe as our neighbors?
Thank you. And now let's go to Ted.
So we need to look at public safety as more than just traditional reactions to crime. We do a good job here in our city of Santa Monica PD, reduce the crime rate by 16% in 2019. It's not more in 2020. We have to not just react to crime. We have to be thinking about how do we avoid situations which encourages criminal activity. So we, last night, took a lot of steps forward. We've decided to allocate more mental health professionals to work in the police to deal with people in crisis. We know that one in five Americans has some sort of mental health issue. It's, it's one of the unspoken horrors that goes in our country along with several other things. And we also need to make sure that our kids have the opportunity to thrive. That means early childhood education, overcome the achievement gap. That means that we have to make sure that neighbors know each other. We need to double down on community policing. Last night, we decided to double the number of neighborhood resource officers. So we have people out there walking around the neighborhood, getting to know people, getting neighbors to know each other, dealing with problems before they actually blow up in our faces to make sure that we're reducing...
Thank you. And now let's go to Terry.
Thanks. You know, for me, public safety is the basis of everything in our community. I moved here in 1998. And just six years later, right in front of my, in front of my condo in the Pico neighborhood, we experienced a shooting just about 30 feet from us. And my pregnant wife dove into the bushes to hide as that was occurring. And this community has improved substantially since then and in part because of investments that we've made in the quality of life, both with community policing, neighborhood resources officers, but also with investments in Virginia Park and programming and the other kinds of things that have brought this community forward into a much safer space. I think it also includes many of the things that Kristin described. She nailed it with feeling welcome. That means knowing your neighbors. And having also a quality healthcare response or paramedics response time is the best in the county.
Now let's go to Anna.
So public health is about taking a community approach. It's about including them in the dialogue. It's about having them make decisions about what is needed and what isn't. It is not only about prevention and intervention and enforcement. It's about social justice. It's about fortifying a safety net, you know. It's about ensuring that, that, like, you know, Kristin said, that all of us feel that we belong, that we can all feel safe, that everybody that walks through here knows that there are no issues with, with them being able to walk along. Definitely taking it from, from a health standpoint, as last night we stated, in, you know, in doubling our resource officers.
Thank you. And let's go to Phil.
I, I take a poll of people in the city right now and find out and ask them, who feels safer in Santa Monica than they did five years ago? The results would not be shocking. Most people don't feel safer in the city than they did five years ago. My significant other doesn't. My mother doesn't. There are people all around this city who don't feel safer. So look, you can, you can spend whatever you want. But we had one of the highest crime rate increases from January... but we had one of the highest crime rate increases from January 2016 to 2019 in the na- in the United States. So, look it, I appreciate the Black Agenda. I absolutely appreciate the fact that we're making, taking steps to add social welfare to our police department. I want to see West Coast care on 24 hours a day. I want to see our HLP teams working. I'm thrilled that we're gonna have neighborhood resource officers in eight beats, and I hope the city goes back to it.
Time.
But our city's not safe right now. Make our city safe.
Let's go to Gleam.
So, first of all, compared to where we were, you know, you can cherry pick statistics, but compared to where we were 10, 15, 20 years ago, Santa Monica is a much safer city than it was. For me, public safety really involves being a place where everyone can thrive, very much like what Kristen said. And so for me, we need to become a city of well-being, crime, people experiencing homelessness. A lot of the things that make us uncomfortable in the city right now are the result of the fact that we're not taking care of people. And if we solve that underlying problem of taking care of individuals' well-being, a lot of the things that people do find uncomfortable will be solved. So I believe that what we need to do is invest more money in things, as people have said, mental health, youth programs, programs that help seniors, those sorts of individual programs that reach out and help people where they are, meet them where they are and help them thrive within the community. Because not only does that solve the individual's problem, but it builds a better community and a better community, a safer community.
Thank you. And, uh, okay, yeah, I see Oscar, you got your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, so we, we, we can't just be tough on crime, we need to be smart on crime. You know, I, and we have a great example here, uh, in Santa Monica, the Pico Youth and Family Center, which some of the incumbents defunded. At the same time, they funded the Police Activities League, while the Police Activities League was under investigation for child molestation. I'd like to hear from any of the incumbents to explain to us, explain to the residents the criteria that they use to defund one program that's been very effective. Terry O'Day talked about the 1998, uh, gang violence. That sparked in our community a vigil for peace.
Terry, your name was mentioned. Would you like to respond?
Terry, I'd be happy to. Look, it's a very clear criterion. If you're a grantee of the city, you got to fill out your audit and fill out, like, your financial state and comply with good governance practices. Not doing that, you're not getting funded, period. This is public money and you have to protect the public money, um, no, no matter, you know, how loud you want to be in the community. And the fact is, PYFC wasn't doing that for us and we had to, uh, we had to step away from funding that organization.
Yeah, so the Police Activities League, uh, $42 million in settlement, how do you protect the public money there?
Time. Thanks. Uh, yeah, Phil, we'll go to you.
I, I just want to, I, I'm amazed, however, that you guys, and Gleam, listen, I agree with you. Programs for social services for our youth and seniors, you know, I'm with that 100%. However, I'm going to repeat this. The people of Santa Monica right now do not feel safe in our community. And we have to solve that. This original question, I believe, was about public safety. So, look it, we have to start doing things differently. It's part of what I call our rebirth. We can't do the same thing over and over again and expect different results.
Go to Anna.
So, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna have to say that not all of Santa Monicans feel unsafe here. I can tell you that 20 years ago, our community felt the most unsafe. And yet now, because we have worked with our police department in building community policing, we have been able to stop violence at the park, to, uh, eliminate a, a process of education to incarceration. So I do not agree with your statement.
Thank you. Uh, let's go to Kristen.
Yeah, sorry, I, I just, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I'm just confused by the "we're so much less safe, um, now than we were." I mean, I know where I live. When I walk down the street at night, I feel significantly safer doing that today than I did 22 years ago, uh, or 25 years ago, or 20 years ago. I mean, I, it's parks I can go to. I don't understand.
Thank you. Thank you. And then, uh, let's go to-
I, I'd like to remind everybody, we're in the 30-second phase now.
Let's go to-
You get 30 seconds.
Phil, come in.
Gang violence is down, Kristen. Part of that is because Oscar De La Torre worked hard in the 90s to decrease gang violence. So, look it, I, I agree with you, gang violence is down. But let me ask you this, when did the police respond to their last shooting or last stabbing in Santa Monica? Within the last week? So it's not really down. I want our city to be safe enough for people to walk around the streets. And yes, the Pico neighborhood used to be the epicenter between gangs, uh, tw- you know, across from Santa Monica College, that whole area. I was horribly unsafe. But we have a different kind of violence now that's spread around the city, and we need to address that as well. And look it, I, I absolutely appreciate the social welfare programs that are gonna help be started by, and, and work with the police and fire departments. Absolutely for that. But I can tell you, one person just said, "Most of my elderly and female neighbors in the neighborhood are prey to walk."
That was your time. Go ahead.
I, just because you said my name, one, I, Oscar, I, you, we might even be next door from each o- from each other right now. I totally agree that Oscar's done a lot in our community to help with the gang issues. I, I, I'm not disagreeing with that, and I know that that has definitely come down. I mean, we don't even have to have a gang unit here anymore. But this idea, I, I think we're, people are perpetrating this idea of a lack of safety to instill fear in people. This is not an unsafe community.
Let's go to Gleam.
Well, yeah, I want to address and follow up with what Kristen was saying because I think scaring people by telling people how unsafe it is, the question is, what do you plan to do about that? I think you've heard from a lot of the incumbents that we believe that instead of traditional bring a gun to the scene policing, we need to invest in the programs that prevent crime in the first place. I'm hearing from other people that what we need to do is more policing. And I think what we know now as a result of the events of this year and really the last 400 years is that policing is not necessarily the solution to these problems.
Thank you. Uh, and let, and let's move on to a follow-up question, still on the topic of police and safety. Last night at the city council meeting, um, given the opportunity, uh, and a specific dollar amount target, um, the council moved to conduct further study rather than commit to, uh, defunding the police, uh, to the $8 million level that was requested. Um, I, obviously, there are people who actually voted on that, but I'm wondering if anybody who did not wants to declare that they disagree with that decision or any of the incumbents who disagree with it. Okay, great. So, uh, everyone agreed. Um, next question, we'll move on. It's been three months since May 31st and we have not yet seen an after-action report for the events of that day. Who is to blame for this and why is there a delay? Oscar.
Well, you know, as, as someone who brought a lot of police reform after the, uh, I was the subject of an investigation, uh, when we brought in the Office of Independent Review, they came out with seven recommendations. I talked to the current chief of police, uh, Jacqueline Seabrook. She said, "Well, that happened before her tenure." And I talked to another chief of police who said, "You know, the city manager can only hire me and fire me, can't tell me how to do my job." So, you know, the, the, the issue of these in- internal investigations, uh, there's an investigation going on right now.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to respond to this? Okay, uh, next question, um, was the-
Wait, wait, wait. Can we go back to that? I'm sorry, can you repeat that question because-
Question, the question is, um, why have we not seen an after-action report on, for the events of May 31st?
Well, I think you and I would both like to know, what the heck is going on? We're almost four months in, three and a half months in, nothing's gone on. There's no incident report. All of us saw with our own eyes what happened that day. I don't know if we really needed to see an independent investigation. I don't know if we needed to see an incident report, but there's no way. We should still be looking for that now. And I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out why our chief still has a job.
Thank you. Gleam, go ahead.
So, um, one of the reasons we haven't seen a report, it's unfair to say nothing has gone on. Actually, a tremendous amount of information has been gathered. What we learned, and, and the council learned this very recently, is that although a lot of the information has been gathered, there's still a lot more information to gather. And so we've hired an independent consultant, or will be hiring, to help complete that after-action report. It seems like it's been a long time, but I want to remind everyone that after the Santa Monica College shooting, it took almost a year to finish that after-action report. These are very detailed documents that interview a lot of people and try and create a chronology. So, we're working on it.
Thank you. Terry.
Yeah, I'll just add to that. Look, I'm not satisfied. I want this immediately. I want to have all the facts on the table. But as, as Gleam pointed out, it takes time to produce this. And the, uh, truth is that we do all have our own experience of that day. We don't have everyone's experience together. And gathering that together in a single report is a substantial effort. It is about flying the plane and building the plane at the same time. And we have now engaged, um, independent experts to help to produce that report. And then, once we've got those facts, we can hand it over to the OIR so that we can assess that what actually happened and get some clout.
And I see Phil's hand is up next. Go ahead.
The, the city attorney received information from, I, I'd call him a cranky resident, uh, right after the event on May 31st, saying that we needed an independent investigation and the independent investigation would cost so much money. Um, you know, that resident told me that. I said, "My God, that's a lot of money when we don't have that money." But now, three and a half months later, the city attorney said, "Yeah, that resident was right. We needed that much money." Why didn't they make that decision right away? And why, why, city council members, were you not out talking to the businesses that were looted? Why weren't you at least comforting them? Why wasn't the city helping to take off the board? I know the police department went out and helped. But honestly, what I've heard over and over again is the city council has been absent. And I, I'm sorry, I really think our city council could have done more.
Kristen.
And even Joe Biden-
Thank you, Phil. Good to Kristen.
So firstly, I would just say, I think that there are probably people at the city who regret giving a premature timeline to the report, right? And, and I think we all should have known that it was going to take longer. I also would love to see the chief come out and say certain things about some of the changes that they've implemented as a result of May 31st already. And I, I don't see why that hasn't happened, but hopefully we'll start to hear more about that soon. But with regard to council not being out there helping on June 1st, I mean, I was out there helping and I saw plenty of current council members and Phil, others like you in the community, out there doing the work.
Thank you, Kristen. Let's go to, uh, anyone else want to weigh in? Uh, yeah, I see Ted.
Uh, yeah, I, I share everyone's patience with the progress on this after-action report. And I will point out that we had to wait until we have the police report before we can do the independent investigation. So it doesn't really matter if we hired someone two months ago to do it or we hire them two weeks from now, because we have to wait for the after-action report, which is complex. All those body one cameras on every officer have to review all that footage. It's a big task. And it, I don't know how someone can say they didn't see the council members out around town. I was out at my local pharmacy the next day. They're boarded up, they got prescriptions stolen for them. They have insurance problems. I went talking around to all the local businesses that I know-
And you're breaking up.
It's unfair to say that we weren't there.
Ted, then I apologize, I'm glad you were out there.
Thank you. I'd like to move on to the next question. Um-
John, I just want to respond to that. So if you don't, I mean- Okay, to say that council members weren't out there is total nonsense. I mean, I was speaking with Steve, who owns the Santa Monica Homeopathic Pharmacy. He was in the hospital. He was one of the few cases of violence to an individual that day. Um, the next day, we had hundreds of people out with brooms and we were cheering them on. It is even be a challenger, uh, in this election and to sit back and snipe from Zoom. But it is a different thing, and it's a special kind of privilege to have that, uh, ability to sit on Zoom and snipe versus actually being in the community and engaging with people during COVID-19.
John, I would also like to respond to that. I, I, I would like to say that, yes, it is very unfair for, uh, people to just say that we're not out there just because they didn't see us. You know, I think that most of us were out there, or not, if not all of us were out there, helping, you know, to clean up, um, removing some of the graffiti, uh, trying to, uh, border up and clean up some of the glass that was out there, um, making sure that people were safe even when they were cleaning up. So it is so unfair for people to just say that we weren't there just because they didn't see us. I think that, uh, um, Terry is right. We don't all go out there for the photo ops. We go out there to help. And that is exactly what we do. So, you know, I, I, I have also requested that we have this, uh, uh, you know, uh, uh, report done. And, and yes, it's gonna take a while for us to do it. And please, please be patient. Don't hurry it, don't rush it. Because out of this, it's not, it's not only going to come out what has happened, but also what we can do better. So please don't rush it.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask-
We, we, we want to know why it even happened. Like, how is it that, how is it that you have-
Oscar, I'm sorry, but we're gonna move on. Uh, I want to ask everybody here, I've gotten this from a lot of people from all over the political spectrum. Based on what we know today, should city council direct the city manager to fire the chief of police Cynthia Renaud? Any ones, want to say yes to that? Well, uh, uh, okay.
What I want to say is it would be illegal and violate the charter for the council to do that. Under the charter, the city council cannot direct the city manager to make any personnel decision with regard to anyone who reports directly to the city manager, including the police chief. So we could not do that legally. It would be a violation of the charter.
Yeah, so that's, that's a problem right there, that you have a city council that's not gonna take action. There was lack of planning, lack of leadership. They were looting the night before. You know, we knew that these looters were gonna come into the community and we, we, we failed. And, and that was a lack of leadership and a lack of planning. The chief of police needs to be held accountable.
So, so let me ask you directly, Oscar, since you said that to Gleam, what you would, what, or how the council should handle this, uh, you know, fire, you know, you said that they won't take action. What should they do right now?
Well, they should i- immediately put her on paid administrative leave pending the investigation, like this. And we, we have an interim chief of police, we have very qualified, uh, captains that can, uh, that are ready to take the reins of the police department, you know, in- internally. So we would, that would, that would be the first thing I would do, is put, uh, the chief of police on paid administrative leave. That's legal, but have a captain step in as interim chief of police, an internal person that can manage.
Okay, thank you. And does any, and to clarify the questions due to Gleam's concern, does anyone just, regardless of the, uh, city council directing, does anybody here believe that she should be fired? Please raise your hand.
John, to be fair, I don't think anyone that's, that's on council can actually answer that.
Okay.
Can I add, uh, a point?
Go ahead, Phil.
Uh, Gleam's point is correct, that yes, the city council cannot terminate the, the police chief. But if the city manager won't take action and if the city manager was complicit in the lack of supervision and lack of planning, then the city council needs to hold the interim city manager responsible. So, look it, uh, uh, yes, it's easy to say, "Well, the police chief," and we all know what we saw. So this is a different type of situation because we know, we've seen it. We saw the protesters, we saw the tear gassing, we saw the rubber projectiles on Ocean Avenue. And I was on Fourth and Arizona and Fourth and Santa Monica for two hours during the looting. I was there. I was calling 911. I was begging for police a half a block away to come and help, as businesses that I knew got looted. So, i- in this case, yes, I had the experience. My mother saw BMW, uh, get looted. She was calling 911. They said, "We don't have anybody. Police, we're stuck on Ocean Avenue." I understand a lot of that, but the excuses-
Okay.
And the lack of responsibility is incredible to me.
Good to Terry.
Yeah, I just want to say, it's exactly that point, that everyone has their own experiences. Everyone saw their own thing, and this is a dangerous rush to judgment to make decisions like this without getting the facts on the table and without consulting with experts in policing. Because the community has very different opinions and very different experiences of that day. And what we need to do is actually go through a process to understand exactly what happened and to take very seriously the role of public community.
Thank you. Um, okay, I'd like to move on to the next topic, which is city governance. Um, what are your proposals for how our city government can be reformed to increase democracy- to increase democracy and democratic participation in Santa Monica to ensure that residents actually feel heard in the process? We're going to start with Kristen.
So I think what Oscar and Phil, and I think a common theme among residents, and I know I felt this way too, is it's a challenge because of the way our city government is structured, that we want to hold council responsible for a lot of decisions that council can't directly make. And so I personally think that if we transition over time eventually to a different type of, you know, city government structure, it might make it easier for everyone to understand who is responsible.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, yeah. So does anyone else? Oh, sorry. Okay, yeah. So next is Terry.
Thanks. Look, we have a community that is very engaged. We have among the highest voter turnout in the state. This club is a great example of the kind of engagement that occurs in our community. It provides a transparent place where people can get together to debate the issues and to endorse candidates. Going forward, our democracy is, and not just from the federal government, but also from COVID-19. And our role in local government is to provide safe spaces for these kinds of debates to happen, to find safe places for engagement to occur and to assure that everyone is, that no one is left behind, because there's so much social isolation, so much hunger and poverty that's coming out of COVID-19. And so we have to find those ways to lift people up, engage them in a safe space in our community to continue to support our democracy.
Thank you. And let's go to Anna.
So I believe that we need to have accessibility. I think that we need to provide language justice, as I have been saying since I came onto the council. I think that we need to have real engagement. I think that we need to have transparency in our process, not simply presenting information, but providing choices for people, engaging the residents in those decision-making. And once they do bring in those decisions and recommendations, present them, just like we did last night with our safety inequity recommendations and with our Black Agenda. That's exactly how we need to do it. So that way, we can not only engage them, have them bring their recommendations forward, present them to us. And then, I think that the biggest thing is, even though we don't.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Anna. And now let's go to Oscar.
You know, I think our community is made up of neighborhoods, and that's why what's a big difference, you know, in terms of where I stand as a candidate against the incumbents is that I support district-based elections, where every neighborhood is represented. Instead of what we have now, where some neighborhoods have a lot more representation. The same thing with our commissions. It lacks diversity. We don't have the voices of all of our residents in the city of Santa Monica. I want to make sure that we have a lot more inclusion in terms of who sits on those commissions. We keep on hearing from the same people. And so we need to make sure that, you know, we do more outreach and bring in those voices that usually are not heard at the dais. And that's something that I've done on the school board, you know, throughout 18 years, is always listen to the residents, always pay attention to the people that don't show up to the school board meetings. I would do the same thing. And streamlining is also a problem as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And now let's go to Gleam.
So I think that over time, it might be worth taking a look at restructuring city government. I disagree that we need district elections, particularly in the form that the plaintiffs in the recent lawsuit wanted, for a number of reasons. One of them is that statistical studies show that where you have straight-up districts like those proposed, you actually tend to build less affordable housing, because the NIMBY elements within any given neighborhood are much more powerful and able to stop those kinds of projects. So I do think that it's worth thinking about what our government looks like. But I also think we need to do things like restore the community conversations where we were going out and meeting people where they were, having them set up the meetings, letting them pick the topics, and then having council members and members of staff go out and discuss the issues that were important to them. And I would certainly support reviving that program.
Thank you. And now let's go to Phil.
So I support somewhat what Kristen said at the beginning. Our current system isn't working really well. Look, you have two council meetings a month. One meeting, people were waiting till 12:30 in the morning to talk about the plaza at Santa Monica. That's not representative democracy at that point. That's a matter of who has endurance or who is so passionate on one side or the other. You need more council meetings a month. You need them to be shorter. You need them to start so people in the city can actually see them and communicate. We need to make sure that the neighborhood organizations are more engaged and more respected in the city as well. And yes, at some point, we may want to look at a change to the charter and have an elected mayor from throughout the city and change the form of government in some ways. But you know what? The previous question about May 31st, there are a lot of residents who feel that there's no transparency with that. So Anna, yes, I support having more transparency. Yes, I want our residents to feel engaged and not rebuffed to come to the city council.
You. And before we move on to Terry, Anna, since your name was mentioned, would you like to respond first?
Sure. Absolutely, Phil. I think that we do need to have more people engaged, yes. We do need to have, you know, in the well-being, they told us what they wanted, you know, during that process, the community told us exactly what they wanted. Unfortunately, because of their budget cuts, we have to think back on what it is that we can and bring back. But here's one thing, Phil, that I know that I definitely have, that I know that I was one of the persons that brought it. That was when I was.
Thank you. And let's go to Terry.
Can I respond, since you mentioned my name?
Okay, yeah, you're right. Yeah, go ahead.
No, Anna mentioned the Wellness Project. And you know, in 2015, I was one of the people who helped lobby Mayor Bloomberg to get a million-dollar wellness grant. I thought that was wonderful. I thought we can put on programs for seniors. We could use that money to help kids. Instead, City Hall established a wellness office. They spent all the money on research. I wanted the money spent on programs for our seniors and our youth. So look, I want us to practice wellness, not just study.
Thank you. And now let's go to Terry.
I think I already answered the core question, but I do want to respond to how we run our meetings, because they do.
I'll let you respond to that point, but I was supposed to call on Ted next. But go ahead for 30 seconds. Go ahead.
Happened before to us. That's okay. And so I do want to just say that, look, we start our meetings at 5:30 so that people can engage in these council meetings even when they have day jobs. And that's why we stay up late. That's why it can get pretty messy and get pretty difficult at times. And I, as the mayor pro tem, you know, stand behind my mayor, Kevin McEwen, who I think does an excellent job of providing community engagement in our meetings and managing a fair and equal process for everyone.
Thank you. And let's go to Ted.
The question is, how can we better engage with our community? I think part of the issue is, we have historically gone old-school, right? We go out, I don't think anybody's ever turned down an opportunity to go speak with Rotary Club or a neighborhood organization or whatever. But you're only meeting a small fraction of the population that way. So I think one of the things we're learning to do at City Hall is technology. The way you reach people these days is right here. And we're developing a database of our citizens, and we can send them SM alerts when there's an emergency. We can reach out to them about street sweeping changes and all those sort of things. That we need to keep building on that. I don't get a minute.
Yes, you do get a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you do.
Go ahead. Keep doing that.
And I will say that we've been conscious of the need to bring in new people. As John started, pointed out at the start of this meeting, we just appointed two new commissioners from this club, which previously never served on a board commission. We're trying to get some new people, younger people, involved in city government. And then finally, I'd say, if we really want to have a council that has the time to be responsive and to reach out to citizens, you need to make it a full-time job. You make that you pay people what they can live on, that support a family to be on the council, and you'll have more lower-income individuals are able to run for office. And you'll diversify the city council. That's something we should think about down the road. And finally, we should start having our closed session another night so we can start the public part of the meeting earlier.
Thank you. And I'll let Oscar get in there. Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, when big money and special interests have so much influence in our city government, it hurts democracy. I think we need to have democracy at the neighborhood level. I think if we have district elections with district offices, with paid city council members and staff, you know, the residents are going to get serviced. They're going to get direct services, direct access to the government in their own neighborhoods. And I think this opportunity right now with COVID, we're having Zoom meetings. We have more participation now from our residents than we had, you know, in person. So this is definitely a good use of technology to expand our democracy, get more input, more feedback from our residents. But the neighborhood associations, they take positions against big development, big projects, and the city council votes the opposite way. You know, we have to question that, you know, what's really influential in our city government? Big money, special interests.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to ask, are there any organizations or entities that you feel are too powerful at City Hall? Is there anybody who feels that way? Are there any organizations or entities that are too powerful?
Developers, people that have, you know, multimillion-dollar projects, I mean, definitely sway the city council members. You know, we learned that they form political action committees. So even though you're running for office and you can only get 340 a donation, it's unlimited amount of money that goes into these political action committees. Terry O'Dea, I think chaired one of them, and I think Ted Winter chaired another one. Most of that money came from big developers that had big projects coming before the city government. So those are the, I think, the groups that have a whole lot of power.
Thank you. And I'm going to let Ted go next, because he was mentioned.
Yeah, I don't really know what the assertion is there. The only campaign committee I've ever chaired, which I co-chaired along with Councilmember Davis, was an attempt to raise funds for affordable housing in the city, which failed. But there was no developer interest in building affordable housing. I just don't know what that.
Thank you. And Terry, did you want to respond as well?
Yeah, look, I mean, I stand up for the values that I care about in the city, and people have reelected me time and again for doing that. And we have an Oaks Initiative in the city that is one of the most progressive in the state in protecting us from the influence of money and campaigns. It prevents donors from making a donation before or after vote by the body, in this case, the city council, that benefits those donors. So that is all transparently provided in reports from the city and consistent with the reporting.
Thank you.
Did Terry ever violate the Oaks Initiative? Or have council members ever violate the Oaks Initiative?
I had an administrative problem in my last campaign that resulted in turning back some money that was donated to me. And that was a good example of how the Oaks Initiative works and why it protects our elections. It's kind of rich to hear Oscar tell us about fiscal responsibility when he couldn't transparently manage the fiscal situation in his own nonprofit that was receiving money from the city. That the city spent millions.
So for the record, the city, as a funding condition, forced the Peak Youth and Family Center to hire social environmental entrepreneurs as the fiscal receiver. They managed all the money. So the budget, the bookkeeping, everything was managed by the city-appointed nonprofit that oversaw the operation. So just for the record, that's exactly what happened.
Fiscal receiver. That is the reason you went in that position.
Okay. And is there anyone else I see? Phil, go ahead.
So your question was, do developers or do residents feel that developers have outsized power in the city? Yeah. Go ahead.
The question is, if you feel any groups have outsized influence?
Well, look, right now, Santa Monica Forward, it has organized, and they have a lot of power in the city. Santa Monica for Renters Rights has had power in the city for years. What I'm more concerned about, and look at one of my old classmates. If, you know, he's on the line, if Chris Harding's on the line right now. Chris has the ear of, it seems, almost every city councilperson and represents most of the developers in the city. And I love Chris. But you know what? To most residents, yes, they have outsized power. And that should be eliminated.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to weigh in on this issue? Okay, Kristen, and then we'll move on for that. Go ahead.
So, and again, this is my own nevete and newness, but I'll say, on the planning, on the development-related topics that I've had the opportunity to partake in since being appointed to council, I truthfully hear the most from residents. And I, my sort of, you know, and Chris Harding, I used to play basketball with his daughters, and I haven't even spoken to him once since my.
And I like Chris.
I, yeah, he's great. I just, I think, again, this is that same, and I don't think it's helpful, this sort of conspiracy theory-type accusation throwing, and it's not really based in fact. And, you know, the hard part about Santa Monica is we're, most of us are Democrats. We're fighting, just, we just have different views of things. And this idea that the majority opinion is not the one that's being reflected on the current council or in their positions is absurd to me. This is what the voters, this is how, I mean, the voters are voting these folks in. And it's not because they talk to developers. It's because people actually believe in what they're doing.
Thank you, Kristen. Let's go to Gleam, and then we'll move on.
So I think the question is, who has outside influence? And I don't think anybody does. I think there are a lot of groups. We recently had the Santa Monicaans for Renters Rights Convention. People worked very hard to get that endorsement, because it's so meaningful in a town where 70% of the people are renters. People work hard to get this club's endorsement. So I think that actually, all of us work to connect with as much of the community as we can, because at this point in time, we want them to know that we listen to them. In all my time on the council, 11 years, when anyone's called and asked, and we have coffee back in the days when you could have coffee, I've never said no. I meet with people all the time. I know they'll vote for me within a million years, but they're still my constituents. And so I think, really, we listen to everybody. Sometimes people call us crooks, but usually, it's simply because they disagree with the position we've taken, and that's an easy way to attack.
Sorry, I didn't want to be rude, but I had to mute, because your time ran up a while ago. Sorry, I'm going to move on to the next question here. This is on the issue of housing and development, so right along the same line of what we're talking about. At a time when the Black Lives Matter movement had sparked reflection and initiated a long overdue reckoning over deeply embedded structural racism nationally and here in Santa Monica, how does your position on development and zoning issues match up with how you will approach the Black Agenda as it takes a central place in the city council agenda? And we are going to go to Gleam first.
So I think if Black Lives Matter, then we need to build homes for Black people. And I think that means we need to build more housing in this community. We want to build it so that it does not displace current residents, which for me means building it along our commercial boulevards and in the formerly commercial and industrial lands on the east side of town. But we have to build housing. We have to build middle-class housing. We have to build housing that is deed-restricted, affordable, so that people can live near where they work. That's environmentally sound. It's also part of being a community, is having people live and work in close proximity. But I think the way we need to approach it is, if we care about diversity, then we need to create diverse neighborhoods by building more housing.
Thank you. And now let's go to Phil.
Oh, so I agree with part of what Gleam said. And here's the issue, though. When we're building the mid-rise buildings along Lincoln Boulevard, when we're building those mid-rise buildings that are charging $3,500 to $6,000 a month for rent, yeah, we get a few token apartments. But are we selling our soul to get those? We're a beachside community that should be a low-rise, comfortable community. And when we build those. And when we build those new apartments, landlords in the Pico neighborhood and other places still find a way to displace their long-term tenants because now they see rents that have skyrocketed elsewhere. So I, I want to maintain diversity in the city. I want to maintain middle-class and lower-class, not lower-class, but diverse housing, and deed-restricted housing's great. But you know what? We can't just keep building high-priced housing because all we're doing is building little boxes, and we're not providing children for our elementary schools or our high school, and we're not providing future city councils, future commissioners. So we've got to find the balance.
Thanks, Phil, and now let's go to Anna.
So, you know, I directed, supported, and voted for the staff to bring back ways of how we can restore some of the neighbors that were displaced from creating the freeway and also from, you know, our other neighbors that we lost. And we have created already a priority list for people that work here, for people that live here, and now definitely also for people that are going, that have been displaced. We haven't figured out, or city hasn't come back yet, to how we're going to do that and what list we can bring back. But those are things that we have already done. Those are things that we have already in place that we need to do. These are things that we can just augment and that we can extend to move forward because that is the right thing to do.
Thank you, and now let's go on to Kristen.
So, we, we need more inclusionary housing. We need, we, we address these inequities by looking at what's been done and how to fix it. So we need to look at displacement and find innovative ways to rectify that. We, we need inclusionary housing, we need workforce housing, we need more affordable housing, and we need moderate income housing. And, and I just don't know how we get to all of that without also developing, especially when we don't really have an affordable housing fund. So we need to, we need more funding for affordable housing, but we also need to figure out how to generate revenue to do that. This, this community actually still needs to work on becoming more diverse. I, I truly believe that. We've, we are losing people every day to gentrification. We're a city. We are not a suburb of Los Angeles. We are not Pacific Palisades. We are a city, a full and complete city, and we have a responsibility to, to show that in everything that we do, and we have work to do. And we, we have to grow.
Thank you, and go to Oscar next.
When I served on the Board of Directors of Community Corporation, I advocated to ensure that we prioritize long-term residents, you know, especially renters that were being pushed out of Santa Monica through gentrification. And I was told that that couldn't be done, you know, so, you know, they said that it was against the law to do that. You know, first of all, I think there should be some restorative justice for anybody that lost property because of the 10 freeway, for those individuals and families that are living in close proximity to the freeway that have to breathe in the contaminants. There should be some restorative justice there with air purification systems and window retrofitting, you know, to, to have some type of justice for what happened, for the displacement that happened years ago. And so we need to make sure that we, we have housing and that we prioritize it. And so, you know, it's just not easy with the market forces that you see, where there's all this market rate housing and moderate, you know, rate housing. Look on where Denny's and Norm's used to be. I mean, who's gonna afford to move into those?
Thank you, and now let's go to Terry.
Thanks, John. This is an important reason why I'm back in this election. Our housing affordability crisis is undermining everything in our progressive government in California. We are underbuilding housing as a state by millions of units. And an issue that I care about deeply is the environment. It is threatening the environment because people drive to qualify for mortgages and they commute into homes, they're living in the urban wild interface and starting fires because of where they live. It is threatening us on economic inequality, I'll tell you. You know, as we look, as California is an example of the nation of progressive governance, this is our number one threat because people are looking at us and saying, if you're so great being the progressive governance, why do you have homelessness? Why do you have economic inequality? You know, it's not enough to put a sign up on your front lawn and to tell people that you're tolerant, or to give a few bucks to fight Donald Trump. You have to be willing to take real action, and this is a major question for us.
Thank you. And now let's go to Ted.
So the question is about the intersection of housing policy and the Black agenda, and I totally concur with Anna that one of the things we need to do is restorative justice for those Black individuals displaced, not just by the freeway, but by the destruction years ago of the Belmore neighborhood where our city center, civic center is now. So we do now give priority to residents who've been evicted from housing, and we need to find a mechanism to reach out to those families who've been displaced years ago and try to bring them back into Santa Monica. I think we also need to acknowledge, the data shows that disproportionate to their, their ratio of the overall population, we have a lot more Black homeless individuals. So we need to continue locally in this region to build housing that is affordable to people who've been living on the streets and in the house. We'll return some of our diversity that way. We have to acknowledge our racist past, the covenants that didn't make it possible for Black individuals to buy certain neighbors in Santa Monica, and the redlining that went on the bank, that we need to find a way to create loans for homeownerships for our Black community and work with our local banks.
Okay, thank you. And now, in order to give the club a better idea of where each of you stand on these important development issues, I'm going to ask you about a few recent bills. I'm going to describe the bill in case you don't know what it is, and I'm just gonna ask you to respond, raise your hand, would vote yes or support this bill. The first one is AB 1436, which would freeze evictions and foreclosures during the pandemic period and 90 days after. If you would support that, raise your hand, yes. Okay, great, thank you. And I think, is Oscar still with us? I lost him on my screen.
Yeah, I'm, I'm voting yes on it, John.
Just wanted to make sure. I saw you, that's all. Okay, the next one is S 1120, which would allow for duplexes in R1 zones. Would you support that bill?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
This is, can you repeat that? That's a duplex in the R1s? So similar to an ADU, but actually a duplex.
That's right, okay, great. And then, would you support SB 50, which would promote more building in transit-adjacent areas and upzoning?
Well, some of it.
Do you want to elaborate on? Go ahead. Do you want, you want to say more, or you just said some of it, so?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, I'm sorry. I just don't have my mic on, sorry.
Oh, oh, I got it. Okay, yeah, okay. And then finally, did you support Measure LV in 2016, which would have made any new development above two stories subject to voter approval? Did you support Measure LV?
That's not true, John. It was over four stories. Two, three, two stories in, in residential neighborhoods, three stories on our streets, four stories on our boulevards were not subject to voter approval. It was a margin building, and that, and it was still flawed because it did not accept public service facilities, et cetera. But it was a four-story. Phil, it was two. Phil, it was two.
All right, sorry, Todd. But, okay, so does anyone else who's an actual candidate want to, want to respond to that, or we move on?
Well, I supported LV, yes, but it was four stories.
Okay, Todd, I gotta mute you again. And then, so does anyone other than Phil, did anyone support Measure LV? Okay, great, so let's go on to a related issue, very important, homelessness. Over 900 unhoused people live in Santa Monica, according to this year's count. Specific actions would you take on council to address the homelessness crisis in Santa Monica? And why is your approach the best approach for actually housing all these people? And we're gonna go to Terry first.
For addressing homelessness on our streets, it is important that we increase our outreach, that we connect with individuals daily, that we connect them to the services that exist in our community and the resources that we all put in because we care. We have to make an approach to this. When I was in high school, I was homeless twice. I know about this. I founded the Stanford Homelessness Action Coalition in response to that. And the fundamental truth about housing, about homelessness, is that it is a lack of housing. And we have a housing crisis in the state. We have to do our part to alleviate that crisis by increasing the supply of housing. And when we do that, we meet our progressive values. There are others who will say, build a wall and exclude people from this community, and the fact is, that is selling our soul when you do that. Meeting our progressive values and the requirements of this time means increasing housing and providing it for everyone to address this homelessness crisis.
Thank you, and now let's go to Phil.
Sorry, I got involved in the chat. So, look, we, we should be opposing bills that try and, the Rena bill, we should have opposed that. We can't afford 8,800 new units over 10 years. And with, with all due respect, Councilmember O'Day, you're wrong. The, the residents don't want that, our city can't afford that, our natural resources don't, will not accept that. So look, we have an affordability crisis in Santa Monica that we need to work on, and everything from deed-restricted housing on down are good things that we should work on. But if you're telling me that you want to put six-to-10-story buildings up and down every boulevard in the city, I, I'm sorry. I think, I'm not sorry. I think you're dead wrong. That's not the right approach for this city. And as far as our homeless situation, you know, we've done the same thing for years, year after year, and we failed. We have a large homeless population in the streets. Let's try something new.
Thank you, let's go to Gleam.
Nobody says what that new is, and in fact, last year, our homeless population went down 8%, while in the county and surrounding communities, it went up double digits. So we're doing some things right. Two things we need to focus on, one, mental health. A lot of people on our streets unfortunately need mental health assistance that will help them. Two, I think we ought to take some of our downtown parking structures down and build deed-restricted affordable housing, particularly permanent supportive housing for people who are experiencing homelessness. That way, they will have a place to live and will no longer be homeless. It's important that it be permanently and supportive because studies show that if you just put people in homes without supportive services, they have a lower rate of success.
Great, thank you, and now let's go to Ted.
Well, I concur with a lot of what Gleam said, where, you know, where the county population of unhoused individuals increased 13% last year, our street outreach team succeeded in knocking that number down by 8%. That doesn't mean that's enough, we need to do more. You need to find more resources to allocate into outreach to get people into services and importantly, into housing. I will mention that I was involved until the economy tanked last spring under private fundraising efforts to assist the city in buying a mobile psychiatric services van because we know that the county mental health department centralized all its services, and we need to decentralize and bring those services out into the streets that treat people who have chronic mental illness or really, at this point, not able to take care of themselves. And absolutely, we need to build housing for those people who express a desire to get off the streets. And one of the things we are looking at is taking down parking structure number three because it's physically unsafe, and we have an RFP out to find someone to develop some housing for our homeless individuals there. So the combination of increasing the street outreach teams that proven to be effective and building the housing that assists those individuals in rebuilding their lives, and increasing the health service.
Thank you, and Terry requested a moment to respond because Phil mentioned him by name. Let's go ahead, Terry.
Oh, thanks. Look, anyone who's claiming that, no one is claiming that we're trying to build six-to-10-story buildings along every commercial boulevard. That is wrong. That is fear mongering, what it is. And if anybody's got a magic wand out there that can stop California from growing, they should wave it now because we are struggling to keep up with our housing supply. We don't build enough housing per year to house the number of students that graduate out of Santa Monica High School. That's not acceptable. And to think that our natural resources can't handle it, what we can't handle is additional sprawl. If we don't build housing in our infill urban communities, then it goes out to the suburbs, it goes out to the Santa Monica Mountains, it goes out to Joshua Tree, the Mojave Desert just burned, we lost more, millions of Joshua Trees because of invasive grasses that have come from development in Mojave Desert. That is not acceptable, and we have a role to play in that. And as progressives, we need to stand up and play that role and do our part and build housing in our community.
Thank you, and Phil, go ahead if you want to respond to that point, and then we're gonna get.
So, Councilmember O'Day, you know, I know you love the term infill. I can tell you, I and a lot of other residents hate that term, absolutely hate that term. So, you know, you're talking about housing. Yeah, we can build housing. We can build it in character with a low-rise community. As far as our homeless situation is concerned, you know, one person told me, well, we've tried everything over the last 25 years, and yet our homeless population has risen over the last 10 years, not shrank. And yes, we had an 8% decrease, and that's wonderful, but I want to see a 40 and 50% increase, decrease, and I want to make sure that our facilities are there to help people who need help, but we have to face up to this in Santa Monica. We cannot help the entire nation's homeless population. And when we have people coming to Santa Monica, and because we have facilities, we've got to find different ways to do things. We've got to keep our parks safe. We've got to keep our streets safe as well.
Thanks. And let's go on to hear from Anna now.
Sorry, Johnny, did just say my name one more time, and I'll just keep it brief and just let you know, look, it's more fear mongering. We are not out as Santa Monica trying to solve the nation's homeless crisis and invite everybody into our town, but solving this problem, I mean, the question is, have we really tried everything? No, we haven't. We haven't been keeping up with building housing in this community, anywhere in the state, and it's not acceptable to say we're gonna build walls and keep people out.
Thank you.
Can I respond to that? 10 seconds?
Okay, 10 seconds, yes.
It, it's really simple. Our population in the state is not going up. So we have an affordability crisis in our state. We have an affordability crisis in Santa Monica. The new apartment houses aren't gonna solve that.
10 seconds, and we're gonna move on, and we're gonna hear from Anna.
Thank you. So I think that we need to create supportive housing. I think that we have one already on Lincoln Boulevard that we have created with Community Corporation that has created housing for our homeless, that includes case management right along with them, so that way they can be provided with the assistance that they need. We have a lot of mental health out there, and I think that, yes, we have already, as council, requested that we look at how to provide the resources or the correct resources to some of those phone calls that we get. So we need to look at that. Another one of the things is that, we were talking about displacement earlier. We had a building over here where we were gonna lose over 40 families that were going to be displaced, and yet, because we moved swiftly and at my lead, we went ahead and saved these families, and not only are we going to be able to provide for these families, but also, we're going to be able to build for some of our homeless population there as well.
Thank you, and now let's go to Kristen.
So first, we have to approach this with compassion and understanding. I, I mean, I'm really looking forward to November 3rd and abide the Paris administration, and maybe we can start to have some federal legislation that'll help us in this crisis. I mean, we cannot solve the crisis of homelessness simply at the city council in Santa Monica. We, there are things that we can do, absolutely. We can expand Project Room Key, we can expand mental health assistance through partnerships with, you know, the organizations that we already provide funding for. We can increase that funding when we, you know, are better positioned to do so. We can have, we can, you know, seek and find ways to have permanent supportive deed-restricted housing. We, you know, converting parking structure three, we can do all of these things, but we need to really be more compassionate about this national crisis. It is not one of our making. One of my youngest brother is a clinical psychologist at San Jose Center. We need to partner with our regional partners and our national. We need to partner with our regional partners and our national government to solve this crisis. Don't just blame city council.
Thank you. And finally, Oscar.
Yeah, I have to agree with what Kristin just said. You know, that the city of Santa Monica can't shoulder the burden for the whole region or the whole country. Most of the people that I've talked to that are on our streets, they're not from Santa Monica. We have a very small Santa Monica indigenous problem with the issue of homelessness. But we need to prioritize serving those that have mental health issues in our community. I mean, that's a big priority for us because our residents, you know, deserve to have some safety. And on top of that, it's immoral, I think, to allow people to just deteriorate on our streets. We have to intervene. We have to help those individuals out, and we need to prioritize that. For the people that are doing drugs and out there, you know, causing mischief, that's a whole other group of people that we need to deal with, and law enforcement needs to step up. You know, we have to be smart about it. We have to get case managers out there, try to get them into rehabs. But we have, you know, we have to love the people. We don't have to love the behavior, you know? And so, we need to have a balance on that. So, I think leveraging our power with regional partners, making sure they shoulder some of the burden is important.
Thank you. And now we are going to move on to the next subject in order to try to cover as much material as we can. We're approaching the end here, but I need to ask you about hotel workers. When you think about construction of new hotels or renovations on existing ones, how would you weigh community benefits for workers such as housing, green space, and jobs with the concerns of the residents who live nearby? I want to go to Ted first.
Well, I think that it's very important to support workers in this country. I think we just talked about homelessness. And one of the causes, and we do hope for a sea change in the federal government, is the gross income inequality we've seen across our country, right? All that wealth concentrated up on the 1% and you leave people unhoused on the streets. It's immoral and basically criminal. So, yeah, we want to support hotel workers. We want to make sure every hotel that comes into the city is a union hotel. So, the workers are being paid a living wage and good benefits so they have healthcare for their families. We want to make sure, we want to try to endeavor to make sure the hotels that are not unionized right now do become unionized. So, I'm supported by United here Local 11 because I worked hard on that issue. I worked hard to get the DoubleTree unionized. Housing for hotel workers is part of our affordable housing plan. Anybody who lives or works in the city is eligible for new affordable housing as it becomes available. So that's one way to keep those workers from having long commutes that add stress to their lives and is bad for the environment.
Thank you. Ted, and now let's go to Oscar.
Well, you know, first and foremost, we should always respect the residential neighborhoods. You know, people deserve to live in peace. And we should work as hard as we can to mitigate, you know, the increase in traffic and noise levels and so forth. People deserve to live in peace in the city of Santa Monica and their homes. You know, when we build hotels, you know, we should make sure, or any project for that matter, we should leverage, you know, our power as a city to ensure that we maximize the benefits, the community benefits to the residents, always. You know, it's sad when workers, when we build hotels and the workers that work in those hotels can't even afford to stay in those hotels for one night, you know? So, it just says that we need to do better in terms of ensuring that those wages, you know, we talk about income inequality, that we make sure that we take care of the people that are the backbone of this economy, this tourist economy. And that's something that I would continue to advocate for on the city council.
Thank you. And let's hear from Gleam.
Well, first of all, I think it's wrong to pit residents against hotel workers. I think we listen to both. I'm a strong supporter of labor. Like my colleagues, I'm endorsed by United Local 11 as well as the LA County Federation of Labor. I think we can provide good hotel jobs. We have done that. We have the strongest minimum wage ordinance in the country. We have the strongest hotel worker protection ordinance in the country. And I'm proud to have been part of bringing both of those to fruition. But more importantly, I think that doesn't mean that we have to penalize or burden our residents. We believe in smart projects. They may be hotels, and they may include unionized workers, but they also bring benefits to the community. For example, the Miramar project is going to take over 200 cars parking off the streets of Wilmont and put them in an underground garage. One of the biggest problems facing Wilmont is parking. So you can have community benefits that treat the residents well, projects that are consistent with the community around them, and yet still provide good-paying union jobs.
Thank you. And now let's go to Terry.
Look, as the failure of our economy through the COVID-19 shutdowns has shown us, we derive substantial benefits from the tourist economy in the city and its diversity. And it would be a shame that this organization, progressives here, would have to carry if we were deriving those benefits without providing for our workers and assuring that they have a quality of life that is fair to the work that they are accomplishing. And our council has been consistent in providing support for work standards and wage standards over many years that has resulted in a vastly more unionized hotel industry in the region than the state and the nation. And we should be very proud of that. And it's the balance that we've struck between our residents and our workers that has accomplished that, and we shall be very proud as progressives.
Thank you. And now let's go to Anna.
So, as I've made it very, very clear, not only from the dais, but prior to with all of my work with labor, I am definitely pro-labor. And I have to say that, yes, we have to make sure that we maximize the benefits that we can provide for our community. There is nothing better than having any development go first to the residents where they are going to be at so that they can ask, what is it that the residents need in order for them to provide the assistance that they need? And have a mutual working relationship prior to that development getting there. So, yes, I think that we definitely need to maximize our benefits. I've been a part of some of those benefits, and I look forward to continuing to do that. And yes, HRE was excellent, actually, in supporting one of the reopening of the developments that we have at the Plaza because they had worked together with that developer to make sure that they provided the best outcomes for all of their employees. Those are the things that I look forward to doing.
Thank you, Anna. And let's go to Kristin now.
John, I apologize. Can you please restate the question? Just because I feel like I lost some of it in the other responses.
Kristin, the question is, when you think about construction of new hotels or renovations on existing ones, how would you weigh community benefits for workers such as housing, green space, and jobs with the concerns of the residents who live nearby?
So, I don't think it's necessarily one over the other. I mean, I weigh both. I mean, everyone knows I'm pro-labor. I support good wages. I support benefits for workers. I support housing our workers here. And I support the many of our hotel workers that live here as residents and workers. But when it comes to sort of a hotel redevelopment or a hotel new development, it's not about putting one over the other. It's about, is it the right development for our community right now? And then are they going to do the right thing? Once we determine that this is the right development for right now, are they also going to meet the values of our community once we, you know, move it through? It's both. Both matter.
Thank you. And finally, Phil.
Kristin, I agree with you. You know, no, no, no. Look, I'm all for any development that meets the needs of the community and is supported by the residents in the community. And I am distressed. Kevin Mayer-McQuen said a minute ago on the chat, 25 years ago, there's only one union hotel. Half the hotel rooms in Santa Monica are unionized. I would be prouder if 100% of our hotel rooms in our city were union hotels with union workers. So I will always support our hotel workers, and that being union in our city and great working conditions. And yes, whenever we can provide housing for them, I want that to happen. But if it's a hotel that doesn't meet the criteria of being good for the residents in the city and not supported by it, and I don't want to build a hotel just because we're going to have more employees there. It has to meet the needs of the community because that hotel will be there 50 to 100 years, we hope.
Can I just, John, can I, just because Phil said my name, and I know it was a positive, but I'm...
Take advantage of it.
I'll take advantage of it, just for... So, again, I think this is one of those situations where the idea that ultimately if... And we'll talk about the upcoming Miramar, right? Depending on which way council goes on that project, I just don't like this notion that that means somehow labor was put above residents when the number of arguments and conversation that we're having with different communities have different priorities and different values. And I just wish people would stop looking at council decisions as not having the interest of the community. You know, I don't think it's healthy for democracy. I don't think it's healthy for our city. You have good people on council, and we have great people running for council. I just really would hope that we improve our discourse. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And so, that concludes our question. Oh, wait a minute. I want to ask you a very quick follow-up. With regard to hotel workers, not off the hook yet, many of the pro-worker policies and practices that impact our state were first developed here in Santa Monica. I want to ask you about a couple of these. Where did you stand on the hotel worker living wage in 2015? Were you supportive or opposed?
Which one are you doing? Support?
Support. Okay, and oppose? Okay. Oscar, you want to explain why you opposed it?
No, no, I worked on that campaign, Measure JJ. We made sure we failed. We lost in the campaign. I mean, but later on, we ended up getting it implemented. So that was a good thing. I support living wages.
Yeah. Okay, great. And the other one is the housekeeper protection policy that was passed last year. Was everybody supportive of that policy? Okay, great. So it's unanimous on that issue. So now, we are going to go to the closing. And I'm going to, before we go to the candidates, I'm going to read two statements from the candidates who are not here.
We also have the first unionized car wash in the nation, right here in Santa Monica. We all should be supportive of them as well.
On this car wash on Lincoln, it's replacing me.
Okay, so Mario Fonda-Bernardi asked me to read this statement. He says, "Please accept my apologies for being unable to attend in person because the planning commission, which is at this very moment considering the Miramar project. I would like your endorsement as the city council needs an environmentalist on board and because the city needs to go in a new direction, more sustainable, more nimble, doing more with less, and more resident in it, and you're sent your consideration."
Someone needs to shut off their mic.
I'll shut them off. Don't worry.
Okay, thank you.
Then Christine sent me a brief statement as well. And she said, "Dear Santa Monica Democratic Club, thank you for the opportunity to interview with you. Regretfully duty calls, and I'll be working the night shift at the Los Angeles County Emergency Operations Center supporting the Bobcat Fire. Best of luck to my running mates Phil, Oscar, and Mario." So now we're going to hear from the candidates who are actually here for 30-second closing statements. And first, we'll hear from Kristin. And Kristin, you said you have a guest speaker, right? Okay, so let's hear from Patricia Hop.
Hi, thank you. Kristin did what we all want our kids to do. She grew up, got educated, went to Washington DC, and made her mark in the Obama administration. Then she came back to contribute to her home community. Now she speaks from a new platform that amplifies her voice in a way that matters to Santa Monica. She hit the ground running and hasn't stopped for a minute. I hope that we unanimously support Kristin tonight, and as you all heard, she's damn good, so...
Thank you, Patricia and Kristin. And now we'll hear from Gleam.
Well, thank you, Santa Monica Democrats. As a lifelong Democrat, it's always a joy to join you. I'm proud that last night I was endorsed by the Los Angeles County Democratic Party. I've also been endorsed by the Stonewall Democrats. So I'm Democrat through and through. I think my record on the council speaks for itself. I'm a friend to labor. I'm a friend to the people who want to make this city better for each and every person and to have our community thrive. So I've been endorsed by you in the past. I've been honored to have that endorsement, and I hope to have it again this year. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from Phil.
I'm happy. I'm a lifelong Democrat too, and I come from very working-class stock in the area. If you believe, however, that the city is better off than it was four years or eight years ago, then you should vote for the incumbents. I don't believe it is. I've had enough of the way the city's run, and I believe we can do better. And I think some new voices need to be on the council to help make those decisions that will benefit all of us. I'm proud to run with Oscar. I'm proud to run with Mario. I'm very proud to run with Christine. And I'm proud that I'm a native, second-generation Santa Monicaan who has walked every street in this city. Been the commissioner for 18 years. I was a school district committee head for six years. I am involved with charities and helping children, seniors. And all I want to do is continue to help people in our city. I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Phil. And now we'll hear from Oscar.
I want to thank all of you for your time and your leadership. My name is Oscar de la Torre. I've served 18 years on our school board. I founded a youth center as a response to gang violence. I grew up in the Pico neighborhood. I came back with a master's degree to help solve problems. I'm a problem solver, and I'm a proven leader who will make sure that we fight for social justice, for environmental justice, for racial justice, and economic justice. I want to make sure that we keep Santa Monica diverse, that we are...
Thank you. And now let's go to Anna.
First, I want to thank all of you for giving us this opportunity to listen to us. I just want to tell you that I bring both the practical knowledge and real-life experiences, feelings, and know-how to all that we do on council. I am not simply there to represent others, but I live in a rent-controlled unit and know the day-to-day concerns to more than half of the population in this city. It is scary times, but with specific protections focused, outreaches, and investments in needed services.
Thank you. And now let's hear from Terry.
Thank you. What a great forum. I have been a lifelong Democrat and activist as long as I can remember. I was supporting the mayor of Buffalo, New York in convertible, driving down Parkside in Buffalo, New York when I was five years old in the backseat. And I'm from a union family. My father always said, "Union wages, put food on your table your whole life. Remember where you come from." And I am in this. This 2020 has been tough, and 2021 ain't getting a lot easier, I would say. And we need to look to the future. That was the full time?
30 seconds. Sorry.
Okay, and finally, we'll hear from Ted.
Thank you, fellow Democrats, for taking part in democracy at this level this evening. I believe while we have some tough times behind us in the last six months in the city, that better times are ahead and I have a positive vision for the future of our city and the experience and leadership to address our challenges. I've been endorsed by the LA County Democratic Party, the Stonewall Democratic Club, and by Santa Monica for Renters Rights. And I've been previously endorsed by the Santa Monica Democratic Club. And I would be honored to once again have your endorsement for this election. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ted. And so, I really want to thank all the candidates who just participated in this forum. It was really great, and it was really spirited and lively. And so, thank you, everybody, for participating.